I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can we see it? At this time for our prayer, I'd like to introduce Mr. Bruce Dunk, who is one of three ministers at the lower U of C church in the borough. Mr. Dunk?
Well, thank you for the opportunity to pray. I would just like to start today with a few moments of silence for the people in Ukraine. It's an horrible situation. If you bow your heads. Gracious God, thank you for assisting the government that can work for the betterment of its people. I pray for the wisdom for these your public servants. I ask for your civility and understanding and cooperation for all involved. Touch each one with creativity to get the jobs done. Thanks in advance for your presence in this meeting. In your holy sons' name, I pray. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Have in front of you the consent agenda. If there is anything anybody would like to pull from the agenda, feel free to say so. If not, I will entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda.
So move.
Second. I have a motion and a second by Paul Ryder and Ethan Brown. Any further discussion?
Isn't always normal to pull, why is it like the road repairs and stuff that you're wanting to move? Is there a reason why it's not in the correct line of the budget?
That's been a line that we use to pay for other items throughout the year. One of the overall amount of lines. So it's hard to estimate what we need through this line. But, you know, we could probably put more into those other lines.
In fact, if I'm allowed to speak, my name is Tracy. I'm the head of maintenance with the county. In the past, just going from what was done prior, they would just leave those lines there and then move the money whenever we made the purchases for the vehicles or whatever it was that we were going to do. In working with budgets in my previous life, yeah, that money's already online and that is allocated and we generally don't have to go through the process that you have here. It's like asking for the money two, three times versus, well, you know, hey, you guys gave us this money, can we have it now? You know, can we have it now? Can we have it now? It, that's how this seems to be. I don't know if it's a redundant system that the county likes, but your question, it brings validity to, it's a valid, very valid question because it just brings more bureaucracy to something that we already have allocated to us to spend.
Because it seems like quite high amounts, why aren't we not?
Good. We have lots here, budget.
I can work with that, yeah, process. And that's, I've just been, you know, I don't have one budget a year. I already based that on previous and that's how I used to do it. So, yeah, I prefer to do it how you're asking.
Okay, all right.
I apologize for being late. Can I ask what, what were questioning in terms of the transfer? Right. Which transfer line were you questioning?
The road repairs to the other road equipment and the road maintenance materials to the other road equipment. I just, they're quite huge numbers. I was questioning just why they're not budgeted in the correct lines in the budget. So there are two pipelines, our local road and street. Well, actually, the ones that were going to other road equipment to the lines. So local road and street, yeah, not the hardware companies and the highways. Got you.
Okay. So it's more of a question, not necessarily wanted to hold those. Okay. So we have on the floor a motion and a second for acceptance of consent agenda. Any further discussion?
That's, that's all lines in the consent agenda?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Passes seven to.
Sixteen.
I'm sorry, sixteen. Yeah, I will also mention the absence of Josh Blue. Okay. Do financial reports at the end of February, which should be about 16 percent. So it's going down through every department. Seems like everybody is in fairly good position. Our overall utilization is 20 percent. That still takes into consideration the higher percent from the commissioner's budget concerning, I think I explained that in the January meeting, concerning the $750,000 of the healthcare that was transferred into the healthcare line. So for may sake, start with Tim in reports.
Yeah. So EMA is at 10.27 percent utilized year-to-date. I don't have any concerns there. I have recently spoken with Mike and I believe that we spoke last month about the, actually it may be on the transfer that we just approved, but the outdoor warning siren issue. Local Road and Street, no concerns. MVH Fund 1176 is at 12.16 percent year-to-date, no concerns. Q Bridge at 6.6 percent. Supplemental adult probation is at 19.8 percent year-to-date. I do want to call out, I have not talked to anybody upstairs, but I'll make notes to do that. Second deputy probation officer is already at 31 percent. So if you look at two months in, they've utilized that line 31 percent. So I'll do some research on that. I just wanted to bring it before the body. Supplemental juvenile probation, no concerns.
My departments are all in line except number one and I'm going to give a pretty and see why we're running a little bit higher than that.
I have nothing particular, all right. My departments are the same, albeit with commissioners, which I've already explained, in the overall 20 percent utilization. No kind of concerns at all.
All right, Mr. Derrick, what's your name?
My clerk is at 16.3, which is normal, transferred about 15. Corner is a little high due to all the excessive amount of bodies we've had this year at 23 percent. Be all right.
And the next item on the agenda is auditor report. Let's go.
I sent out the reports on, I believe, March the 11th. Are there any questions on reports? The other thing I have is the two appointments for the libraries. Delphi Library Board was, they have, you guys appointed Janet Smith and she's ran out of her terms, so they suggested Bonnie Maxwell for the appointment. And then is a renewal for Lois Johnson.
So move. Second.
We have a motion and a second for Bonnie Maxwell to be appointed to the Delphi Public Library and Lois Johnson to be appointed to Camden Library. Is there any further discussion from the council member? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, sign. Motion passes six to.
That's how long that?
The next item on the agenda is a resolution that was prepared by Eric. No, somewhere. There it is. And Eric, if you would want to take a minute and.
Sure.
What did that resolution consist of?
Apparently, there is a piece of property that the commissioners have looked at, that they are interested in. It is on Cottage Street, 405 Cottage Street. It is being considered for county office space. The resolution before you is a necessary prerequisite before any purchase can be made and it essentially is your okay to move forward. And that would be the next step required. The county is required in purchasing property to have appraisals done. There can be no more than, they can't purchase for any more than the average of two appraisals. And from what I have seen and learned from Ted Johnson, who was actually involved in sending this to me in the first place and requesting it be placed before you, everything's in line. And if you give your okay, then I'm going to be ready to proceed and see if they can't make a purchase.
And this is outlined in some of the stipulations up above. As we stated, there's no appropriation at this point. It's just pretty much stating that the commissioners remove the building. But it's depending upon the aforementioned stipulations of above.
Yeah, so it would come back to you. If they, if they are able to get the deal done, become satisfactory to both parties, then they would come back for appropriation.
Motion approved. You certainly made it.
Second.
Second, Paul Ryder. Is there any discussion from the council side?
We state or have a discussion in regards to what the usage of this property would be and the rationale for why we would fund this.
Second, please. The use of the property is for both our EMA director to give him a little bit more space as well as for our corner. We've obviously ran into some issues concerning some cooling units for the bodies we've had. How many have we had thus far, Chris?
Sixteen.
Sixteen. And last year we had.
Three.
Three. So, and these seem to be extremely, I don't want to say bizarre, but some have been rather bizarre in the back, but we're utilizing White County at the current time.
Yes, and we had 17 as well, so, yeah.
So.
So, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
So this would be atypical to our normal volume?
Two years ago, we ran heavy through. Last year, we did not, but I saw an increase two years ago as well.
Does that suffice on?
So, so those are the two?
Yes.
Those are the two?
Those are the two. Again, I know that this is.
Also, probably what the media don't tell me too, but the understood that.
Not an ambulance.
Yeah, I spoke with Warren yesterday and that's what he pulled on the phone to that or stuff, because they were kind of filling the ambulance.
Can we not put an ambulance there? Well, that, I mean, that's a, that's.
No, that's first I've heard of an ambulance. I've heard of the backup for 911. And a more, if necessary.
Yeah, and I think that the present plan is, is not an immediate plan. It's more over a two-year-ish look of a plan and, you know, baby steps taking, getting the building, maybe getting our EMA out of the basement and getting Chris in a home. And then as we, you know, begin looking at some of the things that we can do out there, I don't think there's any discussion. I think initially there was a discussion about 911. I don't feel that that's, you know, if we're looking at a jail at some point, I don't feel that it's advantageous to try to move 911 twice. But I believe that.
You mean the backup?
Huh? I didn't, yeah.
Yeah, I think first it was like to put all 911 communications to the backup.
So, so we had for two years a standing offer from the town of Flora, rent-free, to establish a backup center in Flora that was never acted on or utilized by the previous director.
I thought we just wanted to fund it, they said.
Morris didn't fund it. He had to.
I think we funded it.
The equipment's in the building, so.
Yeah, but I mean, I'm just saying, we had that available. We're still going to have to fund it now if we move it, right? Or if we, if we create redundancy to set it up in that tribute center building?
Mike, how much is that to, to create that 911 backup center roughly possibly? Oh, well.
It's all going to depend on the consoles that were bought that are still sitting over at Raycom are not designed to be a truly independent backup. So if we had to evacuate Delphi's and get rid of, and evacuate the 911 center here, as long as we have power there, we could use that. If the power's completely down, there's, the way those consoles were bought, we can't use them. I started looking into it and I was told that we weren't moving, to forget about moving even the backup or moving 911 there. So I quit talking right now about it.
But you gave me a number roughly.
Well, it wasn't going to be cheap. This is like 60,000, $70,000.
I thought it was only 20,000.
It was like 50 or 60.
So where, where does that break down, 60 or 70? I mean, we got three backups. Some of them are sitting at Raycom and have been sitting there for years. Help me understand.
Like, I, so the, you gotta run, you still gotta run the power to them. You gotta set up the, the systems. You're gonna have to have Indigenous come in and prove that you could even put the CADs in there. And then the power lines, all that have to come running into it.
The power lines, hmm.
For the CAD. There, there's certain power lines that they have to run in.
Is there broadband out there now or?
There is. Well, broadband runs throughout the city of Delphi, but it's also $130 a month. That's why I was looking into the cradle point.
So, so if, we didn't do a cradle point, but we did, we did broadband, we used the broadband system, would that lower the cost or?
I'd have to talk to Raycom again. Like I said, I stopped moving 911 because I was told it wasn't moving anywhere.
My point is, if that was the reasoning for not moving 911 when we had a rent-free building, why would we now be all excited to do it at the additional cost of property? That's my, that's my question. If, if there's going to be costs to retrofit and, and move that system, or at least a portion of that system for redundancy, that's apples to apples. And we didn't do it two years ago because of that. So why would we do it now at the additional cost of property when we had rent-free space available?
Do we still have that available?
No, we don't. To my knowledge, I don't think we do. I think that's been used now, but, but, I mean, the principle of the matter still remains. My other question is, other costs to retrofit, other costs to maintain, who's going to clean it? Are we gonna, are we gonna hire another Keith or another custodian crew to go clean it and maintain it? The utility costs, the heat and cool it, like, where is this funding going to come from for the next undetermined amount of years to maintain this over and above the cost to purchase it, over and above the cost to move everybody and all the new equipment needed to get everybody what they want to, to make it viable?
Well, the way I see it, the courthouse is kind of out of space and these guys are downstairs in the basement. When it rains in the spring, the, the offices flood, it's hotter than, all get out down in that basement. And so if we have somebody who wants to meet the coroner about their deceased relative, it's, it's really a pretty poor place to meet the coroner to, we just seem unprofessional in my opinion to have people meet the coroner in the basement or at the Dairy Queen or wherever, you know? And so, yes, there will be costs. I understand that. But, but to progress Carroll County, you know, to the future, if, if you're out of space in the courthouse, sometimes you have to buy bullet and, and go ahead and buy a nice solid, you know, block brick facility to, you know, to, you know, we just, we're out of space. I mean, so that's my thought on that.
I, I guess I'd look at it in the fact that 911 was kind of a, I don't want to say a coattail issue, but it doesn't make a lot of sense to me to try to put 911 three blocks away from your main, your main 911 console because if Delphi loses power, I think probably Delphi will lose power.
I mean, wouldn't you have a generator backup though? I mean, many homes in Carroll County had generator backups. Where, where are the county courthouses?
Right.
By Lord of it.
It'd be a good thing because you'd only be down for essentially two minutes to say it, that 911 there. Something were to happen with this facility here, you could get the new facility in just a couple of minutes there as opposed to driving to Florida 10 minutes away. So you're essentially not making calls with that amount of time. That's the lives we're talking about, in my opinion.
We don't have an option to go to Florida anymore. I mean, this gives us some options. I think we're, we need options, you know? We need to be more progressive and capable of the future and growth and, you know, academy.
Well, I talked to the town, I talked to the town floor about our radio in there. They called me and Darryl called me and he said that they were fine with it being in there, they just would like to see it either utilized or taken out. But they, as far as it just being stacked in the corner, it's been there for two years now. Something happened, you know, take it.
Is there, is there still room to utilize when they're?
I, I have not seen it or anything like that as far as, they, they said there was from there.
There's nothing over at Florida. It's all sitting at Raycom.
Really?
Yep. Nothing apart.
Aren't they hell on that room for that purpose?
The room was there.
Okay.
I've since been told the room is no longer available now.
The room was. I haven't talked to Flora, the fire chief at all about that in a long period of time. But I know no, no equipment that was purchased when we did the upgrade has moved into the Florida area. Those three consoles are still sitting over there.
There was never equipment in Florida, was there?
No.
As far as you know? Yeah, me either.
As far as I know.
If, if you're saying that's what Darryl said, I don't know what he's talking about.
That's what Darryl told me.
I think we're losing track of what was, was on the table in Congress. They want permission to fund an appraisal and to move forward in the building of the building. I agree with Paul. You have to start somewhere and if you're ever going to progress and you're ever going to have, you know, new things, but then I agree with Tim, how are we going to fund it?
How are you going to fund it?
And I have thought of different ways that it can be funded. They have an investigation center that's sitting out that they're paying rent on, we're paying utility and all. I mean, it could move out there and then you wouldn't be paying double internet, double telephone, wouldn't be paying rent because you own a building. So there are aspects to look at.
And we're paying the community corrections rental property across the street. We're renting that. I mean, we're renting two different properties in Carroll County. Should we not own our own possibly? Not pay rent?
This doesn't say that you're going to purchase.
Right. This is.
People would have to okay that later.
The problem is going to be is. Well, I just, it's going to cost, it's going to cost what for the appraisal, $5,000. So right now, we're looking at, we could waste $5,000.
Well, we have, we already have, and, and I regret voting for this, but we wasted $5,000 on Todd Price's property for those two appraisals that.
But if you don't do an appraisal, you'll never buy a piece of property.
I agree, but I, I'm, yeah, I agree.
Call for vote. Hey, we've got a motion and a second on the floor. I presume we're, no further discussion, I'll ask for it. Okay. Those in favor of Resolution 2022 Act 101 allowing the commissioner to pursue appraisals, not the purchase of, but the appraisals for, that's what I want to say, for.
Probably just the address 405.
Yeah, to, to address the 405 Cottage Street address. So those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes five to one. Okay. I'll, I'll wait on the additional business of some of the things that I passed down. That moves us down to additionals. The sheriff donation, sheriff's training and equipment, $2,840. Sheriff, do you want to address that, please?
I was just going to say, it's just a donation fund that he has money into, that we just need to get it in the line so he can spend it.
Okay.
How's that?
Well, that was easy.
That was a bad request that he do this, so I thought I should have given you that.
So a few more steps. Well, we want to do the additionals.
Together.
Together.
Make a motion.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the two additionals, the $2,840 for sheriff donation, sheriff's training and the reimbursable grant from EMA for $38,986. Any discussion? Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes six to. The additionals to be advertised, I think that's set, we've got two, if correct, that's set both of those out to us either yesterday or the day before.
No, we just have one.
Just one?
Prosecutor's pre-trial. He put prosecutor on here, I put pre-trial.
Okay.
And that is, he filed it on the 11th and I didn't have time to go ahead and advertise it, so I just put it on the agenda so you guys can do the consensuses to advertise for the next meeting.
We need a motion on that, don't we?
No, not like.
It's already information. Agenda, okay, just the information. And this is above and beyond here is budget amount. I think we gave 30 or 35,000 here, called Jack in figure, budgeted in his pre-trial. Currently, he's got $58,000 in pre-trial. And I think during previous budget hearings, we have stated to, to the prosecutor that if you want to utilize some of your amounts in your pre-trial, the version above your budget amount, come in and ask for it and you'll, you'll supply it. And I believe this is for a vehicle and for a new hologram.
This also has to be, once, if you do approve it in April, it has to still go to the state, which doesn't take very long. But it's not just a okay.
Okay. The state has to.
Yeah.
The state has to.
They may have to look at the budget and the figures of it to present beginning balance and ending balance and see if there's money there that they want to plan.
Okay. And that will move us on to any additional business. What I have placed in front of, in front of each of one, each one of you is actually two documents. One is the final ruling of the American Rescue Plan money. And I know Tracy and I were at the commissioners meeting last Monday. And they have come down with, gosh, I know technically two different ways that the art money can be utilized. One is utilizing the art money. First and foremost, the commissioners have to make a plan for utilization of the art money. And their plan, of course, can be a changing plan over the course of years. The plan has to be in place by December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four. And the money has to be spent by December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-six. The plan can be changed over the next couple of years in focus and usage of the art money. The second way that the feds have offered this money to the commissioners and to the counties is a process called loss revenue. The, in, with loss revenue, the commissioners will have to claim or declare loss revenue. And with the feds, they have said that you can utilize and claim loss revenue up to the amount you're awarded or a ten million dollar threshold. So there are some counties that got much more than ten million dollars. I'm sure Marion County being one, probably Tipton County being another. We only received three, I shouldn't say only, we received three point nine in two different installments. The second installment will be coming in May. So in that three point nine million, we can claim that entire amount as loss revenue, which at that time, the usage dates go away and the art guidelines go away. I believe. Is that right?
The guidelines, the guidelines are still intact and so are the guidelines.
You've been under loss revenue? Okay.
Because you have to do the reporting.
Okay. For some reason I thought that those.
I thought the audit requirements were less.
Yeah, but the audit is.
Because the audit requirements can be pretty big and they'll have to be on less than burdens.
But the money's still worth it.
That's my understanding.
Okay.
And, yeah.
Okay.
And the power won't be extended and.
Via their, the commissioners plan. Okay. I guess I was misunderstood. It had to be, those things were, yeah. But anyway, it can be utilized in, in any purpose that the county typically would spend money on. So it could be roads bridges, it could be fire trucks, it could be, obviously we're utilizing some of it for broadband projects like EDC. So that is, that's kind of the information on the, the form of the, the paper that I sent out to put in front of you. The second form is an updated calculation by Baker Tilly. And if you go to the second page, they're stating, and I remember one of the meetings that Baker Tilly put together for us, this may have been three years ago or so. We had about twelve-ish million dollars that we could spend on a jail. This new calculation has it at fifteen eight. In the second, about halfway now, illustrative project funding, the second line, other county funds, that takes into consideration, that's six point two two zero. Takes into consideration the money that we've raised through the taxation in correctional facility and jail project fund. I think we've got correctional facility currently at two point nine and the jail improvement project fund is one point zero five. But this calculates, I'm not for sure when the end date on this is, but probably two years into the future. That's about what we'll have in the culmination of those two funds. It does not take into consideration, I believe in one of the joint meetings, we told the commissioners that we may offer some money out of rainy day. And then also the discussion with EDC, how they may or may not be involved in that project. But I did want to share this information with you. This was right at one of the meetings that we had a couple of weeks ago with Baker Tilly and their.
Yes. Yeah, and, and you were, you were right about the non-expenditure in one situation. And that would be if we went through the process of accounting loanings to EDC. There is a process that you can use, again, this is back to broadband specifically, where there would be a loan that would be made with EDC. They would enter into a loan agreement with the utility company. It's a complicated structure and that's back to this reporting and how much it, how much it takes to record on the loan. But the one thing that it does do, you don't have the length of time limit, the expenditure limit. And I think that's where you were remembering. So there is a way to do that. There is a way to, to replace general fund money under the, you know, that first broad category, which is where we're replacing loss revenue. But you have to enter into this agreement. Essentially what you're doing is you're giving general fund money, which has no limits, right, to the EDC. There's a lot of different ways to do it. Gets into the weeds pretty fast.
Okay, maybe that's, that's your mind.
That's what you were thinking of and it twisted my memory and I went back and indeed that's have no limits if you do it that way.
Through the general fund.
Correct.
And I would like to point out on your big correctional facility fund, every month it has increased from last, last year. What we receive and what we receive every month is eighty-four thousand seven sixty-three.
So by the time two years, that amount could be up.
And we all know if, if we need to, ish, maybe three years before we can be in any of our jail. So, not that that's a benefit, obviously, because it certainly isn't. And I know the commissioners are chomping at the bit to try to do something new in it.
I just wanna delve in those numbers though. It was still a twenty million dollar deal.
More than life.
And I love being asked for it and not being told. Because we did not give them another twenty million.
But I believe there are people, Elvatos has to come back, right, with the new proposed jail?
Well, I don't know that they're gonna have a proposed proposal. I think the commissioners must say, our jail, this is what we're gonna provide.
Well, what I understand is Elvatos is designing a jail for a county in some other state. And that, that our jail would be, could be almost identical to their design. So therefore, as you know, a design could be ready as far as May if we approve that design. Sheriff, if you wanna say anything about that. So, so, you know, it's really not that far away. You know, they're already quickly designing a jail, you know, for this other county, which could duplicate, you know.
Four sixteen million or the one million?
Well, I, I've heard four seventeen.
I, I say don't hold your breath to Elvatos because every county has to come back with a price to have to do.
Well, I think maybe we ought to lean on Elvatos a little bit because they're already designing a jail for another county. They're gonna have a complete design ready in, in May. And, and so if you've got a design sitting here and Carroll County needs a design, you know, you could, you could.
Copy and paste.
Copy and paste. You know, I mean, in all reality, that's what private people would do, you know, work out with us. So we figure out a way to take a lot longer and spend a lot more time and money to do exactly what we would have done. I, I was curious, you know, Toad, you, you had some work done on the jail, a new sewer line fix on our old jail. And I was curious, you probably already said this, but how'd that go and, and is everything better now regarding the sewer line that's underneath the jail that we're using?
Yeah, overall plumbing, and again, speaking to sewage, everything seems to be working well at this point. We are still having other plumbing issues. It seems like we get one crack filled and something else springs up. And they're, they're minor, they've been minor incidents, but let's face it, the building's aging. This is the thirty-ninth year of operation, so.
So you, you just call in the plumbers as needed and they, they fix the new crack and.
Right.
And so what about the jail doors? I've heard in the past, the doors of the jail, it's hard to find replacement parts of the door. I guess they're all currently working at it, I believe.
Right, yeah. Yeah, you, you're correct. It is becoming more and more difficult to find, you know, thirty-nine-year-old replacement parts, so to say. There is a company that reached out to us from, I can't remember the town or city, but in the state of Washington. It apparently can offer, potentially offer repairs for our doors, but at a very exuberant cost.
Do the motions exist in the past about the inmates going to county jails or?
Or back to state. That, that will help more so than larger counties.
If it has?
And, and will become law July one.
July one.
Yeah. Our main concern right now, this may be tied in with COVID. In fact, about ten days ago, I did some quick stat checking in our own facility. Seventy-six percent, our issue and the overcrowding issue, seventy-six percent are pre-sentenced. The majority of them have bonds but do not post bonds and twenty-four percent are sentenced. So our issue are those pre-trial individuals, not necessarily what they say.
Those are Carroll County numbers?
Yeah.
So seventy-six percent are pre-sent.
Pre-sentenced.
And, but yet they're not, wouldn't you say they're not taking their bond or they're not?
They have, the majority of them have bonds, but they don't post them. Either they can't afford them or for other unknown reasons, don't post those bonds.
Well, isn't there some sort of movement in the state to do away with bonds more and?
Yes.
I mean, especially if you got a drunk driver with addiction, person, you know, I mean, non-violent situations.
Obviously that's more from the judicial side, so.
Yeah, do you have any recommendations for the, the county to, you know, help anything along? I mean, is there any way to help people take their bonds or pay their bonds or? So people are sitting in jail because they don't have bond money to get out?
There are some.
So is that just some or is that?
It's, it's, I don't, percentage-wise, I don't know how many, how big that number is or how small that number is. I just know that there are individuals there and I guess all site-specific reasons, there are family members that just simply want that family member to remain.